Good afternoon. This is the MISD regular school board meeting on September 15th, 2020 at 6 o'clock. Thanks for everybody for joining. The first thing we're going to do is if you'd rise, we're going to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the ethics, one state under God, one indivisible.
Dr. Morrison, do we have any special recognitions? I know we just had a really big recognition ceremony there.
We have a lot of special recognitions, but we will do them in a very focused way. Dr. Lopez, if you would step forward.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, evening.
No, it's evening now.
Six, we're even.
You weren't a good student, were you, Mr. Carter? We had a really special evening tonight from 5:00 to 6:00. We were able to honor our 2019, 2020 Teacher of the Year, Spirit of Montgomery, and our Montgomery ISD MVP recipients. So it was very nice this evening to have all of our award recipients here, and we were honoring them with a wonderful cupcake, a nice Coca-Cola beverage, in our wonderful boardroom. So even COVID will not stop us, and we'll still recognize our employees. So we asked for them to hang around because we would love it if we could get a picture with you tonight and get those three groups. So if you would allow us to, we will do masks off for that quick moment Photoshop. If you'll stand up behind your chairs, and we're going to call each group in to stand in front of here and get a picture with you. So for our Teachers of the Year, Andrea Serral, Montgomery, I'm sorry, Madely Ranch Elementary, Carrie Adams, Lone Star Elementary, Maddie Stewart, Stewart Creek Elementary, Cindy Siple, Montgomery Elementary School, Shannon Shannon, Kenan Elementary, and Kiara Ott from Lincoln Elementary. Our secondary Teachers of the Year, Oak Hills Junior High, Robin Holcomb, Montgomery Junior High School, Crystal Inyard, Grant Cooper from Montgomery High School, and Lindsay Duke from Lake Creek High School. So if y'all will come on. All of y'all, we'll get all the Teachers of the Year together, please. And then we'll tell you how Candace will tell you if she can see it, if she can get all of you together. Can you scoot in just a little bit? Kiara? We'll do a quick no mask. Okay, ready? Masks off. We'll take a break. All right. One, two, three, let's do a couple. One more, and just getting one more. Okay. Mask off. There you go. Lovely. Thank y'all, and thank you Teachers of the Year. Our next award recipients of the evening were the Spirit of Montgomery winners. Those are our campus-based paraprofessionals. For Madely Ranch Elementary, Ms. Stacy Backus. Lone Star Elementary, Sherry Johnson. Stewart Creek Elementary, Maggie Hanum. Montgomery Elementary, Lindsay Waddell. Kenan Elementary, Teresa Musel. And at Lincoln Elementary, Waddell, Mr. Buddy Hodges. And also at the secondary Spirit of Montgomery winners, would join them, please. From Oak Hills, Jessica Enman. Montgomery Junior High's, Melissa Jones. Montgomery High School, Joanie Parker. And Lake Creek High School's, Reba Anderson. So you can see your beautiful faces. There you go. Two, three. Looking good. It's good. Those are our Spirit of Montgomery winners. And last but not least, our Team MVP Award recipients. Ms. Tina Bozarth from Child Nutrition. Don Wright, Maintenance. David Crowe, Technology. Jacob Aw from Curriculum and Instruction. Rodney Cartwright from Transportation. Kelly Cole, Finance. Debbie Carm, Human Resources. Diane Tomlinson, Communications. Cameron McWashington, Police. And Jesse Alfred, in Athletics. So if you would all come forward, and let's take your picture. So thank you, Board, for allowing us to recognize them tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all the award recipients that we had tonight. Moving on to our first agenda item, calling to order item here, we have the hearing for citizens to present to address to the Board about the proposed tax rate. Is Eddie? We don't have any citizens that have registered to make comments about that, so we're going to go ahead and move on. Onto the next agenda item, we have comments to the Board, and we do have a few comments here. The one thing I would say is that for everybody that's going to make a comment tonight, the Board cannot make a response to you whether we agree with you or not, because it would be a violation of Open Meanings Act, but we do listen to everything that you say, and we appreciate your comments. So for the first comment to the Board, we have Jessica Grace.
Tonight, I'd like to introduce myself as the PTA President at Stewart Creek Elementary. I have four children in the district. Two of them are at Stewart Creek, one is at Lone Star Elementary, and one is at Oak Hills. I realize that most of the comments and questions that you've probably fielded lately are about COVID, remote learning, and all of that, but I'm going to go backwards and talk to you about bond funds. When we voted on the bond for the new schools, I attended all of the town halls, and I read everything put out by the district, and I distinctly remember the talk being that existing schools would get attention as well as the new construction to make sure that there was balance on each side of the district. For example, I know that there were upgrades at both MHS and Montgomery Junior High to assure that they had whatever amenities Lake Creek and Oak Hills were going to be furnished with. Well, I feel that that was not done at the elementary level, and I've actually received confirmation that it was not. I realize that at the bond time, Stewart Creek Elementary did receive a new roof, carpet, and paint makeover on the hallways, but nothing was done with the bond money, to my knowledge, that directly affects the kids. I've always been very involved in my kids' schools and programs, but as the PTA President this year, the reality has become abundantly clear. You see, Stewart Creek is a Title I school. It is also one of the oldest elementary campuses in the district, with the exception of the ones that just got turned into elementaries and got full makeovers. So yes, it clearly needed a cosmetic upgrade regardless of the bond money. But I'm going to talk about playground equality. The new schools were given covered playgrounds, shade structures for outdoor classroom areas, benches for staff and kids to sit on, in addition to the cosmetic side that being a new or upgraded building comes with naturally. I'm not sure if you're aware, but because of its age, SCE underwent a safety audit this summer. We had to have our pre-K playground removed because it did not pass safety standards. In running the numbers and talking with Smith-Salter, we figured out that it would cost us over $15,000 of her school budget to replace that playground. Seeing as that's something that only 40 students would use on a daily basis, that's not a good use of her campus funds. But it is a playground that every other elementary campus in MISD has. Some schools even have theirs covered. In addition, Stewart Creek has zero shade opportunities outside for students with the exception of trees. Along with the playground, we also had to have our large deck removed from the back of the school, which was used often as an outdoor classroom, due to the safety audit. In an attempt to remedy the shade and deck issue, we began researching and discussing covering our basketball court. That is, a pre-existing area that all we want to do is cover. Even with a local company willing to give us a discount, all of the bids were over $30,000. I know, I can hear responses from some others that might say that PTA should fundraise for these requests, and it's highly possible that many of the shade structures and upgraded equipment at some of the campuses have been funded by PTAs. But like I said before, I have kids at two elementary schools in the district, so I'm going to talk about Lone Star and Stewart Creek specifically. These two schools are extremely different in their demographic makeup. I am a member of both PTAs, and I can confirm that Lone Star's PTA budget is around four times the amount that Stewart Creek is able to raise in a given year. That shouldn't surprise you, seeing that we're a Title I school with a high percentage of low SES students, so it's kind of obvious that we don't fundraise at the same level of success. Our PTA has been saving funds for nearly three years, and we still cannot afford the quoted $30,000 shade structure without leaving us with a balance of $0 to function for the year. After saving for a shade structure and having two areas of our playground removed because of the audit, I thought it was important to bring this attention to the Board. I do know that there is bond money left to spend, and I've driven around this entire district and taken comparison notes of each elementary campus's facilities, and I'm here to tell you that they are not balanced. I could stand here and read off what each school has and doesn't, but that would take longer than I'm allowed, and I don't really think it matters. My point is that expecting a principal to use her campus funds to replace equipment that failed an audit when our campus is already filled with some of the oldest equipment doesn't seem very fair. The first question that I'd like you all to consider is this: When a safety audit is failed on equipment that is nearly 20 years old, why isn't that replaced by the district under building maintenance? And my second request is, can you please consider using some of the remaining bond funds to bring all, not just Stewart Creek Elementary, because we're not the only ones suffering, all of your district playgrounds up to the same level? I would be happy to be a part of a research team that puts a plan together if you need people to make this happen, but I'm asking that you please consider these concerns when you make decisions with the remaining money.
Thank you so much. Next person that we're going to have up here to speak is Jennifer Moore. Jennifer Moore here? Oh, thank you.
I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I was asked to come and speak tonight to the Board and to the people of Montgomery, and so you all know and can see me, I'm the crazy mom that started the petition to get rid of the masks. I have a copy of it, if you want to read it, you're welcome to read it. Dr. Morrison has a copy of it. I am not a covert operative for a West Texas billionaire group who's looking to dismantle our public education, but I hear they're coming in hard to Montgomery County, so you guys might want to look out for those guys. I'm a mom of eight and a grandma of 3.75. I've got one coming in November, and I don't have a political agenda for this. I know that that is usually the first thing that people think. The fact is, I'm so disgusted with both sides of the aisle right now. It's infuriating, and our kids are suffering because of it. We have kids that could be victims of rape or abuse, PTSD, suicide, homicide, drug addiction. Being a kid is really hard these days, and COVID isn't, it's not our only enemy. I don't know why we would want to contribute to any of these things. I worry about the physical and emotional toll of these masks, that we don't know what they're doing to our children and their future, and I refuse, I absolutely refuse, to get behind the idea that these are now or will ever be normal. There was a Snapchat that went around about a week ago, right after school started. Thirty-nine kids commented on it in about 15 minutes. Twenty-nine of those kids said they couldn't breathe. I think we need to listen to that. Many of them spoke of acne, overheating, anxiety, claustrophobia, inability to see due to foggy glasses. Three kids said it was because it was against what they believe are their rights. Three. It's not political. That's a no-brainer right there. It's not political to these kids either. My four are miserable in these masks. My son, who's sitting right over there, comes home every day with a new mask that we trade out. This is full of blood and pus from the acne that he's gotten in the last six days. We spent months and hundreds of dollars to clear his face up, and all the work that we've done is for nothing now. And he's going to face the process of, excuse me, the prospect of permanent scars. His dermatologist never once recommended that we keep it dirty, wet, and covered all day. He and his brother are madrigals. They have the incredible Mrs. Orr back there. If you see her, she's amazing. She's part of the reason they're still in public school. But I can't imagine them trying to do what they do with these masks on their face. If you have a student that rides the bus or is in extracurricular activities, you can be looking at eight to 10 hours a day that these kids have a mask on their face with very few breaks. I know that's something they're working on, I'm grateful for that, but it's still, it's not enough. My boys drive themselves, and I drive my girls for that reason, yet I thought it was really weird that we were strongly encouraged to carpool. That makes no sense to me at all. The first thing people like to say is if you don't like it, then do remote learning. Well, I could say the same to you. If you're scared, you keep your kids at home. I guess we need to find out who the majority is. It just worries me that we're going to be opening up our kids to additional health issues and now comorbidities while trying to protect them from something they aren't terribly likely to catch and even less to die from. Comorbidities is a buzzword. Sure y'all know what it means. It's the simultaneous presence of two chronic diseases or conditions in a patient. If anyone can give me a 100% guarantee that these masks are safe and that my kids have no risk of any issues going forward, I'll show you a liar, because we simply don't know the answers to that. That brings me to the point of why I'm doing this. Our schools are supposed to be a safe place for our children, and for some children, they're their only safe place. Our teachers, who are way too underpaid to begin with, now have so many additional duties, and I honestly don't know how to do it, and I'm worried about their health, too. I sent my kids back to them because I can't do what they do, and we have some of the best teachers I've ever met, and with eight kids, I've met a lot of teachers. We all know that it comes down to the money, and I encourage all of you guys to look into that. Look into the figures, and you decide what your child's worth. I've been told there's nothing I can do. The TEA is to blame, while their website states they can't close schools for a health reason. They follow the governor, who says the districts know best, yet he made an order based on the CDC recommendations, and after the 94% bombshell the CDC dropped just before school, I think it's pretty clear that they don't really know what they're doing either. So I guess we're on our own. The one last point I'm confused on, and I just learned of recently, is we're now doing open enrollment for some of our schools. If we are in such mortal danger, why are we inviting people from other districts to come? Could it be the funding again? I'm here speaking to you today for the 1,573 people that want to change this, and it has to start somewhere. Please, make these masks optional. Let the teachers and students decide for themselves, and please let our kids breathe.
Thank you. The next comment to the Board that we'll have is Ms. Amy Jones.
Good evening. First, I would like to praise our extremely underpaid teachers, and what a great job they've done during these times, considering you gave them five days to prepare. I would, but thought aside, I would like to address the COVID tracker. I'm glad to see you're doing something. However, it is very difficult to follow. One day, there are 36 exposed systematic cases, and you pull it up the next day, there's zero. That doesn't make sense. That can't happen. So as a parent who is trying to make a scientific, informed decision, I would really like it to be a little better than it is. I understand it's new and it's coming, but if you have a look at the Conroe system, it's phenomenal. It says how many have been exposed, how many have recovered, how many are in quarantine per school. So if you would, if there's any way to emulate that or just make it a little better, I would really appreciate it, because I would like it just to be a little easier to understand, because I'm not sending, I'm not comfortable sending my child back yet, because you don't have the numbers yet. But right now, it looks great at my child's school, so, and I'm ready for her to go to school. I want her to be there. I'm not a teacher either, but I want to keep my family safe and my daughter safe. Thank you.
That's all the comments that we have to the Board tonight, and so we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. There's three items on the consent agenda: Consider approval of the minutes, final reading of the Board policy, which the Board had a copy of that in the last Board meeting, and then also considering the approval of the renewal of legal services agreement with Walsh-Guigues-Tribino, and they have a really long name. So does the Board have any questions about those consent items? Anything that I need to remove from there? Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda and all three items presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Going on into the action items, we have our first action item, which is considering the approval of the out-of-state trip for the MHS choir.
Thank you, Mr. Dossi. We'd like to bring forward our principal at Montgomery High School, Dr. Shear, and the aforementioned outstanding choir director, Heather Orr.
Good evening, and actually Heather Orr has got all the information tonight. I'm just blessed to be able to serve her, so I will turn it over to our amazing choir director, Ms. Heather Orr.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak with you tonight. I am requesting, on behalf of my choir students, to take them to New York City, and that would be this April, and I understand things are uncertain right now. However, I'm requesting this permission so that we can begin fundraising. I think that's very important, to put that in the mind of our students and our parents to know that we need to raise money for this. And our last trip, which I've been at the high school for 20 years, and I believe that we've taken, this would be our sixth trip to New York City, and each trip has been an educational trip, everything from singing at the New York Knicks game, singing the Star Spangled Banner, to, so going to 9/11, going to Top of the Rock. We even had at our last time, we, the musical Come From Away, we were able to actually work with the musical director and the choreographer from that and learn the opening number. And so that was pretty exciting for our kids, but those are things that we would like to be able to do on this trip, things like that. And we did work with a company the last time we went to New York City, and it was called Perform America Texas, and that's who I actually used for our Dallas trip, which actually, March 11th, when we left school last year, we were supposed to leave on our Dallas trip on the 13th of March, and we didn't go, obviously, but that's okay, because the company that we worked with was fabulous, and we were able to get all but about $14 back for our families. And so what's great is this company is now working with a travel company, travel insurance company, which is called C-FAR, and that's the travel insurance company, and it's Cancel for Any Reason, and that's what it stands for, and so we would definitely have that trip insurance. And then if something would happen that we aren't able to travel in April, then we would extend that trip to a later date. But I think it's important, some of our kids do raise all of their money for the trip, and I just want to give them every opportunity we can to help them do that. So I'm requesting permission to take them. Any questions?
Real quick one clarification. How many choirs have gotten this distinction this year across the country?
How many, well, are Corral Women, is that what you're?
The distinction to go to New York.
Oh, we'll take the whole choir program. Last time, we took about 100 kids and parents.
How many other choirs across the country have gotten this distinction this year?
Invited to the conference? Invited, oh, invited to the conference? We're the only women's choir, actually, in the United States.
In the entire country?
Yes.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
She doesn't know how great they are.
Brag a little, Miss Orr.
Yes, yes. So any questions?
Can you walk the choir?
Yeah, sure. Here is a highlight video of the Montgomery High School choir program. I hope you enjoy. These are our kids, our Montgomery High School kids singing. All the recordings that you'll actually hear on the video are Montgomery High School kids.
(music) 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 (music)
Do you have any questions?
Wonderful.
Thank you.
One quick question. What is the fundraising program?
Our biggest fundraisers are sponsorship sale, and that typically brings in anywhere from, well, during a non-out-of-state trip year, normally about $12,000, but during a trip year, about $25,000.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, thank you. Does the board have any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll recommend the board approve the out-of-state trip request for the Montgomery High School Choir for New York in April 2021, or thereabouts.
Adam, second, yeah? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you got your trip.
Thank you so much! Thank you! (applause)
All right, moving on to our next action item, considering the approval of board resolution authorizing employee compensation.
Thank you, Mr. Dossi. This, Dr. Lopez is gonna come forward, as, as we know, not only did we have a lot of interesting challenges to start off the year with COVID-19 and remote learning, but then we also had hurricanes and brownouts to contend with. That caused some days out for our students, but also with teachers, and so we need to not only bring forward a resolution and action item around compensation, but also to update you around how we'll have those make up days.
So, yeah, exactly what Dr. Morrison said. We were out for August 26th to the 28th, due to the forecasted inclement weather. Most of you probably had to still turn on your sprinklers on those days, but, and that's a good thing. But we were closed for remote instruction on August 26th, and then we were closed completely on August 27th and August 28th. So we're asking you tonight to pass a resolution to compensate all of those employees who were willing and able to come to work due to, on those days, if we had been open. I'd like to show you Tasby's guidance on this during school closings, is that many districts wish to continue paying employees their regular wages in order to maintain morale, reduce employee turnover, and to ensure continuity of our staffing when our schools reopen. So normally, if it's under a week's time, then we pay our employees. I want to show you, just take a look at the next slide on our two calendars, what we are going to, would like to propose for our calendar update. May 20th and 21st, Thursday and Friday, were our last two days of student instruction with our students. They were half-days. We would now make those full instructional days with our students. And then when, coming back on May 24th and 25th, that Monday and Tuesday, those days were professional development days, no students. We had already had them in the calendar for inclement weather days. We would now like to utilize those as days with our students for student instruction, and we will take those to early release instructional days on Monday and Tuesday. Moving May 26th and 27th, just in the event that we possibly have any other inclement weather days, or anything else might happen, May 26th and 27th would be our then inclement weather days. And this would still provide us with the required, so, in addition, it would be over and above the required 75,600 instructional minutes that the state of Texas requires. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
And we did this in the springtime as well? At the same?
Yes, sir, we did the resolution. Yes, sir.
Did the board have any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the resolution of board regarding wage payments during emergency school closings.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next agenda item, consider approving of deferred maintenance projects to be paid out for, out of 2015 bond funds.
Thank you, Mr. Dossi. We have Bobby Morris, our chief operating officer, who's gonna come forward with some requests.
Yes, sir.
We have been looking at our 10 campuses, we have been looking at needs. We are in the process of compiling areas that we need to address, and you're going to hear several of those requests tonight, that would be coming out of the 2015 bond.
Yes. And in the future, our hope is to include additional funds in our maintenance and operation budget annually for deferred maintenance projects throughout the year. That is, that is our goal going forward. But tonight, we are bringing you four priority projects, we believe. We have been assessing all of our, all of our campuses, all of our facilities, as Dr. Morrison said, and probably will be bringing more projects to you in, at future board meetings this year. But tonight, we have four projects that we would like to bring you. Number one is to replace one air-cooled chiller, carrier chiller at the east end of the Montgomery High School campus. That, that campus has two coolers on the east end. They, they both have, both chillers have two compressors, so it's actually four units. One of the chillers, one unit is completely out, and the coils in the whole cooler are very, very bad. So we really need to replace that, that one chiller. Right now, we're running that east end of the campus on one and a half chillers and barely keeping that, that one running. So, our request is to remove and replace that one chiller. Also, we need to replace some coils on two small chillers at Montgomery Elementary School, four coils on one of the chillers, and one on the, on the other. And it just so happens that, that these chillers were, both chillers at both schools were put in during the 2007 bond, when we built the east end campus, and when we renovated what was then Montgomery Elementary. So the chillers are, are 12-years-old, going on their 12th year. Lifespan is normally about 15-years. Then the third item is, we need to fill in some ruts and, and re-sawed some, some drain, some ruts at Lake Creek High School. When you complete a project, like Lake Creek High School or any new school, the contractor, in order to, for you to sign off on the, on the document that the project is complete and you accept it, you, you normally require 90% coverage of vegetation on the site, and of course, Ramala did meet that goal. But one area, over by the tennis courts, where there's quite a bit of slope, it was thin, and in that area, the rain that we've had over two years has washed away some dirt, and so we need to, to bring in more dirt, smooth it out, put sod down, staple it down, and put a temporary irrigation system in that area to, to keep the, the grass alive. And then the last item we would like for you to approve tonight is to refresh the kitty cushion at all of our elementary school playgrounds. As, as it was mentioned tonight, that the safety and security audit, it was mentioned in the safety and security audit, that we need to replace or refresh the kitty cushion, the mulch in there, and also some borders. So we're asking you to approve these four projects. The individual cost in the projects are in your board materials, but the total cost is $292,275.19 for all four projects.
Mr. Morris, have we met all the bidding requirements for all of these jobs?
Yes, sir, we have. You have the bid documents in, in your board packet there. The, the air-cooled chillers, we had, we, we had four bids on the, on the number-one project, and, but two of the bids pulled out. The second one, we had three bids, and no, we had two bids and a no bid. The sod, we had two bids and a no bid. The kitty cushion, we had three bids. Yes, sir, we have met all legal requirements.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does the board have any other questions about this?
Of course, this would be taken out of the remain, some of the remaining bond funds this year.
Do I have a motion from the board?
I move to recommend that the board approve before deferred maintenance projects above as recommended by the administration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
All right, going on to our next agenda item, the next several here, and we call this the Chris Show, starting, which is considering the adoption and setting of the order resolution of the 2020 ad valorem tax rate for debt service.
Thank you, Mr. Dossi. And as our CFO comes forward, you can notice it's an important night. He's got long sleeves and a tie and a jacket. But this is an important portion of our agenda. It's not only to be able to set forth the tax rate, but also to fulfill a very important obligation and direction that this board had, which is to balance the budget. So, we'll turn it over to Chris Lynn, our CFO.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison, Mr. Dossi, members of the board. This, I think it's fitting tonight that we're talking about tax rate on a night where we've been celebrating success at the Montgomery High School Choir. We've been recognizing our employees. Although you may not think about it, I think tonight's gonna be a reason to celebrate our tax rate as well. This being my first opportunity to present the tax rate to you as an employee of Montgomery ISD, I want to take a little longer this evening and do a little education, because I don't know what information has been shared in previous years. But just so you understand, the tax rate is comprised of, of two components. So when we talk about the tax rate, you'll hear us talk about the maintenance and operations and the debt service, or as it's otherwise known, interest and sinking. You add those two together to get your total tax rate. And so the maintenance and operations portion of the tax rate is typically the larger of the two, because that's used to pay personnel, all of our instructional materials, supplies, all of our operational expenses come out of that maintenance and operations portion of the tax rate. The debt service is usually smaller, because that's the amount that is used to pay the debt that we owe for the bonds that have been approved by MISD taxpayers, okay? I thought it was important to give a little history, and so this is the Montgomery ISD tax rate history from 2005 to 2020. And so there's 16 different bars on that slide, and I think it's very interesting to see that there was one time that that tax rate increased in 2016, and that was after the 2015 bond referendum, okay? And so I think this community should be proud. It shows that previous boards, previous administrations have taken financial responsibility very seriously. And you can see that the tax rate has been lowered from $1.66 back in 2005 to what we're proposing tonight to be $1.2798. Let's talk about the interest in sinking tax rate first, because it's the, actually the agenda item that's first on the agenda tonight. Remember, once again, this is what we use to pay our, our bond indebtedness, and so last year's rate was .3375 per $100 of value, and we are recommending tonight the same rate, .3375 per $100 of value. So no increase or decrease, but the exact same INS rate as last year. Now, when we get to the maintenance and operations side, it gets a little more confusing. When, when we go back to 2018, the highest rate allowed the district to adopt without going to the voters for additional approval was $1.04, and that was made up of the dollar rate plus four additional golden pennies. Last year was the first year of House Bill III, and so it changed that formula a little bit. That dollar was reduced to 93 cents, and the district still had the opportunity to add four golden pennies to it, creating the, the MNO tax rate of .97, which was adopted last year by this board. Here in 2020, this is the second year of House Bill Three, and it requires further reduction of the tax rate. The state based their rate on property value growth of about 4.5%. And so their calculation said that the maximum rate would be .9164 plus five pennies. You notice there's an additional penny in there this year that the board has the opportunity to accept. So for the state, they said the highest rate would be .9664. However, for MISD, since our property values are growing faster than the state average, we have to reduce our rate even further. And so the maximum rate that MISD could adopt this year was .8923 plus those five additional pennies, generating that total MNO rate of .9423. But once again, this is a decrease from the rate that was adopted in 2019. So back to the total tax rate, remember, this is the MNO plus the INS. And so in 2018, you had $1.04 MNO plus 33 cents on INS, total rate of $1.37. Last year, .97 and .3375 resulted in a total rate of 1.3075. For 2020, the rates that we're recommending are .9423 for MNO and .3375 for INS, a total rate of 1.2798, which is a decrease from the rate adopted last year. Now, the tax rate unfortunately is only part of the formula that determines how much our taxpayers pay. And it's the only part that the school district has any control over, okay? The other half is based on appraised values. And so as I said, our appraised values continue to increase. That's beyond the school district's control. And so you will see that the average taxable value of a residence last year was 300,000. This year, it's 314,000, so you see a little bit of an increase. Now, one thing that's important for our community to understand is that as property values increase, our state aid decreases, okay? And so even though our tax rate is being reduced and our property values are going up, the money that we generate locally is offset by the money that we get from the state. And so you can see on this chart, the each year, when the property, local values in blue go up, the orange from the state goes down, okay? And so even though you may be paying a little more in taxes locally, the district is not accumulating more and more and more funds because the state is offsetting that amount for the district, okay? And so that brings us to our two items tonight. First, agenda item 7D. We're asking you to consider, adopt, and set by order or resolution the 2020 ad valorem tax rate for debt service. And once again, that rate that we're asking you to adopt is .3375 per $100 of value. And the motion that we need is in your board packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Would you like us to go through these one at a time?
They're, sure.
That's what we should do, okay.
Let me ask you one quick question. So what you're saying here is, and it is a little complex. We, the school district, are lowering our tax rate, and that's one of the multiple, or not one, one of the numbers that gets multiplied by a assessment, not assessment, an evaluation of, what is the word I'm looking for from the county?
An assessment was correct.
Right.
Property value.
So, yeah, property value. So if the property value goes up more than we lower the rate as a school district, I, the homeowner or property owner, my rates go up even though the school district piece went down.
Yes, sir. So it is very possible, and we're in that situation now, with property values increasing at the rate that they are, even with the school district lowering the tax rate, you could potentially be paying more in school taxes. However, once again, the, oh, sorry. This board only has control over one of those variables of that equation. And so you are lowering the portion of the equation that you have control over. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lynn, is this the last year House Bill Three is going to require us to lower these? Or do we have one more year?
No, sir, I think there will continue to be a lowering of the tax rate. At this point, the state hasn't put out their estimates for statewide property growth moving forward. So we don't know what those potential targets might be at this point.
And my only other question is on item 7E, so do you want to wait on that one?
I'll defer to Mr. Dossi on that.
Yeah, let's go one at a time.
All right.
So the first agenda item here that we're going to consider is considering the adoption and set for the ad valorem tax rate for debt service. Do I have a motion from the board?
I motion that we move that the 2020 ad valorem tax rate for maintenance and operations.
Debt service.
Oh, Lord have mercy. Yes, do it one more time.
I move that the 2020 ad valorem tax rate for debt service be adopted and set by order resolution at .3375 per $100.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
You're always ahead.
All right, so let's go ahead and go on to the next agenda item here, agenda item 7E.
Okay, so this one is going to be just a little more complicated, okay? And so the point of my information tonight was to help make a complicated scenario a little less complicated. The, adopting a tax rate is supposed to be a transparent process, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's easily understandable. And so on this one, when we're adopting the tax rate, we're asking you to adopt the MNO rate of .9423. There are actually two motions that we need. One is for the MNO portion of the tax rate, and the other is for the total tax rate, to combine the two. And both of those motions are in your packet this evening.
Right, so just a little bit of clarification on the second motion here. The first one is about adopting the actual tax rate, which is, we're decreasing. And just so that everybody knows out in the, in the public here, the second motion that we're going to do is, when they say the tech, the property tax rate, that's including those two components that we talked about. The school portion and the property tax portion that we have no control over.
Right, so since the district is lowering their tax rate, but property values continue to increase, the homeowner actually will see a potential property tax increase. But, and that's where it gets confusing because we are actually lowering the tax rate, but because values are rising, which are out of our control, the actual motion says it's a 5.07% increase because we'll be generating more money locally because of that rising property value, even though the tax rate is going down.
Right, and we have a problem with this every year because it's, the wording is required by the state for us to say.
Yes, sir.
And actually, when they say the property tax rate, what's confusing is it's really an effective property tax rate. It's not the property tax rate of the district. That's what's the confusing part.
Yeah, like I said, they tried to design a very transparent process. That's why I've spent a lot of time tonight trying to make sure that our community understands the tax rate is going down. Their property values more than likely went up. That's not in our control. And so they potentially could pay more in taxes, but not because of any action on this board of trustees' part.
That 5.07 increase, that's based on current appraisals. I mean, not collections, that's based on what we think the county will collect.
Yes, sir.
Is that as simple as you said the appraised value for the average three homes was 300,000 to 314, 315, that's 5%?
Yes, sir.
Is that coincidental, or is that 5%?
That's how they come up with it, yes, sir.
Chris, is that 5.07% increase, is that based on 100% collection rate?
I believe, I believe it is, yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Mr. Dossi, you answered, you asked my question and answered it. And so only one, now I'm on the right page, and I apologize to the public on that. Mr. Lynn, I know the answer to this question, but when people start asking us about the appraised value, who should they go talk to?
They should go talk to Montgomery County Appraisal District. They're, they are the entity in charge of property value assessments.
Okay, thank you. Can I do the motion?
Go for it.
I'm on the right page.
Can I say something real fast? I, I think it needs to be said so the general public understands that this is not the first time that we are hearing what you're telling us. I mean, this is not, you said it's very complicated, and so I just, I want to make sure that everyone knows that we're just not making decisions on the fly up here, that this has been weeks and months of meetings and talking, talking this stuff out. So I just, I felt like that needed to be said because I felt like it was pretty shotgun up here.
Yeah, and, and, you know, unfortunately, like I said, this is my first time presenting it to this board in this district. And so I didn't know what education had taken, had been given previously. I wanted to spend a little more time than I normally would.
Sure, thank you for that.
We appreciate it.
And we need it every year.
Yes, sir, okay.
Okay, I move that the 2020 ad valorem tax rate for maintenance operations be adopted and set by order resolution at .9423 out of every $100.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then we've got one more motion that we need.
Dr. Fuller, you want to take the next one?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $1.2798 out of every $100, which is effectively a 5.07% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we get to go to some more fun news.
Now, now we get to have a little more celebration.
Yeah, so let's go ahead and go into considering the approval of the budget amendment number three.
So it has been a very long summer, and I'm sure a lot of people are tired of hearing about the budget. I personally want to start by saying I want to thank these administrators sitting over here to my right because it truly has been a team effort. Even though I'm the one sitting up here getting, having the opportunity to deliver this positive news to you, it was their efforts that helped us get here to where we are tonight. And so on the screen, you can see that when we first started having our budget conversations during the summer, even before the budget was adopted, on June the first, we were projecting a deficit of $2.8 million. Through some, our work administratively with Dr. Dixon, we reduced that deficit down to 1.6 million by the time that you actually adopted the budget. Since Dr. Morrison has joined us, we've continued that work. And so we had budget amendment number one that we presented to you in July, which reduced the budget, the deficit 836,000. We came to you last month with budget amendment number two that reduced the deficit even further by 472,000. And so I'm here tonight with budget amendment number three that reduces that deficit by another $400,000. And so if you look at that last line there, it says adjusted deficit negative $31,188. That means after your approval tonight, your budget has a surplus of $31,188 through all of the hard work of this administrative team and two superintendents. But we finally got there. Thanks to, you know, it all started with direction from the seven of you behind this table. So thank you for that direction and holding our feet to the fire and making sure that we accomplished the goals that you wanted. So once again, I think it's fitting that we're presenting this tonight on a night of celebration.
Thank you so much, Chris. It hasn't been easy, and I know for some people it has affected people.
Sure.
Budget cuts always do. And so what I would say is, you know, going forward, I think I said this the last time, you know, we can't stop here. You know, our goal was, as a board, our goal is to make this the highest paying district in the county. That means we're going to have to keep being more efficient. So, so this is, this is step number one. Let's try to figure out how to get to step number two.
Yes, sir. I am going to enjoy tonight, though, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Any questions from the board?
No, thank you, Mr. Lynn, thank you, team. Phenomenal job to do that in the timeframe that y'all did. And I know Dr. Dixon's not here, but thanks to her and Dr. Morrison as well, just great job by you guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have a motion?
Move to approve budget amendment three as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Okay, so going on to our next agenda item under informational items, we have reopening the school update. And one of the things I did want to point out before we go into that is I do appreciate the fact that we now have these aligned to our, our goals. So I don't know if the board, if you guys noticed that. Where we have, for the audience here, if you look at the agenda, we have alignment with goal, whatever it is. We have goals for the board, and so, so thank you, Dr. Morrison, for helping us get there.
Thank you, Mr. Dossi, and we're excited about presenting this information item, and it really hits all of the goals, although we chose to highlight goal one, which focuses on instruction, goal two, which focuses on safety, and goal four, which really focuses on engagement of our employees and our communities. When you hired me as your superintendent, you gave me three high priorities, other ones to come. But priority number one was to complete the work on balancing the budget, which we have done tonight through your action. Number two is to continue that work so that we can better compensate our amazing employees, and that work is ongoing. Once we achieved the balanced budget, we've already started working on how we're going to get to better compensate our employees. And I just need to make sure that when I say employees, sometimes we focus on our teachers. But from our recognition programs that we saw earlier today, this school district is an amazing school district because not only of our great teachers, but administrators and support staff, and we need to do right by them, and we will. But your other priority was to reopen school and do it exceptionally well. What you didn't tell me is that we were going to do four different school reopenings. We had our reopening on August the 13th, which was remote for everybody, quickly followed by our phased-in approach, which, again, I'm really proud of because we made a commitment through your direction to bring students back sooner than many school districts across this region and across Texas did. So we had our phased reopening of pre-K kindergarten. Special education students served on an alternate curriculum, and those students impacted by connectivity and challenges with technology. And then we brought in our phased reopening of sixth grade and ninth grade. And then really, the joy was last Tuesday, September 8th, where we were able to welcome the vast majority of our students back to campuses, but then also make our commitment to have remote instruction for those families choosing to do that. On every one of those reopenings, our administrators, our campus principals were truly heroic. Our employees, our teachers, our support staff were phenomenal. And it was not perfect, but that was not our standard. Our standard was to try to be excellent, and on each one of those, I think we achieved that. We've had a lot of sayings along the way. One of them, don't try to be perfect, try to be excellent. And everything is subject to change because every step of the way, as we were making preparations, there was new guidelines coming from USDE or TEA or health departments, and every time, we had to pivot and adjust. But that's just part of school in 2020. What is exciting to me is that as challenging as reopening schools in a world of COVID has been, where you don't get to assume that you know anything that is familiar, everything has to be rethought. Every aspect of school, getting student to a bus, getting students off of a bus, welcoming students into the campus, how we're going to do lunches, how we're going to do kindergarten rotations, how we're going to serve students in AP remotely when they have labs. Everything has had to be rethought. But along the way, we've realized that we've been able to innovate in things that will make us better. I think right now, if we don't welcome back our pre-K kindergarten students earlier than everyone else, our elementary principals will have a lot to say about that. If we don't welcome back our sixth and ninth grade students who had an amazing opportunity to transition, maybe better than we've ever done it, our secondary campuses would have a lot to say about that. So has it been challenging? Yes. Have we had an opportunity to do it differently for the sake of being better? Absolutely. So tonight, we want to share with you some of the things that we're able to do with our opening on September the 8th. And we'll share with you some of the things that we're exceptionally proud of, and we'll also share with you some things that we know we have to work on. And we're start, not that he's something we have to work on, but we're starting with Mr. McFadden. Or maybe he is.
Thank you, thank you. I am happy to announce that we did make teachers very happy. We made administrators very happy when we welcomed people back in every one of our classrooms, K through 12, which was the goal. We won't, this is opening number four. We're waiting for opening number five, when we have 100% of our students back in our classrooms because that's where we do it best, is in our classrooms. But as of right now, we have anywhere from 80 to 87, 88% of our kids back in person. So that leaves us 12 to 20. And they're equally important to us because we realize the choices are different for every family, and we're committed to providing a quality experience. Have we gotten there in every, every aspect? Absolutely not. We're learning every day. We're meeting with teacher groups, we're meeting with administrative groups, and we're trying to come up with better ways to do things because we weren't designed to do this. But in the United States, we weren't designed to do a lot of things a lot of times, and that's part of what makes our character resilient and what makes us a great country is we're able to, I'm not going to say that word because I'm tired of that word of, we, we do this in basketball. And so we're changing our direction. We're finding another way to say, we're going to, yes, you guessed it, pivot. We're pivoting, and we're pivoting every day. And because we did have to rethink everything. But we are glad to have our kids back, our, a lot of our kids back. And we're glad to welcome our remote kids every day, too. We're still live zooming. The problem that we're having, and just to put it out there, is when we took two weeks to get ready for our sixth and ninth graders, we got really good at remote instruction. We got so good that when we came back, and now we have K through 12 in school, and we have a hybrid model with some kids at home and some kids here, teachers are feeling the stress because it's like having two jobs. And so things, when they didn't have kids in front of them for eight hours a day, that they could devote to 100% virtual is now being, you know, they're having to, to monitor and adjust all the time. And so it is difficult, and it's a learning experience. And the things I like about Montgomery ISD teachers are they adapt, and they're getting better every day. Talked to the old dog Brenda Bevan today, and she's like, I'm figuring this thing out. I'm, I'm logging in with my Zoom kids, and I'm taking them around my room to see what we're doing on that day. And I'm, I'm going to figure it out. And that's the, the thing we've got going for us here, is we've got teachers that are willing to figure it out and work to figure it out. So having that two weeks to get really good, now the expectations that we aren't really good in the remote model, and we're working for that. And we're, we're just asking for patience to get there because it's new for teachers, and they're the, they're the boots on the ground, they're the troops that we're trying to take care of. Because when you take care of those troops, they're going to take care of us. And so we're trying to get them what they need and to listen to them. Reopening, it looked, it looks a little different, and, you know, like it or not, that's what we have right now. And to tell you the truth, in our classrooms, what we thought were going to be big issues, like we thought kids were going to really fight us on things like mask. Principals, and I've been on every campus, and I've been in the classrooms, principals are saying, the kids are great. They're doing what they have to do because it, it's just like anything else that we have that we ask them to do. Whether they like it or not, it's what we have right now to keep our schools open, and our kids are being compliant with this. Every principal is saying, it's amazing what our kids are doing. And so I just want to commend our student body because they really are cooperating with this in a difficult time. And that's just what it's taking right now. this in a difficult time, and that's just what it's taking right now. Our hallways, remember, we talked about staggered release times? Now, I can't tell you our hallways look like this during every release period, but remember we went to block schedule, four releases instead of eight, seven releases a day? And well, we're able to release some grade levels early, so we have some, some space in our hallways, which we normally don't see. It's not like that every time, but they are doing what we're asking them to do and taking it serious. Lunchtime is a, blows my mind when I go and watch our lunch periods. We have kids, high school kids, who don't like to be in, you know, controlled by us. They're, they're following our, our instructions. They're coming, and some campuses have them sit before they go to the line, so we can control the lines to keep it moving, and they can find, they're in their spots. When normally a bell rings, they go where they want to go, and we're asking them to do some things that are different, and they're complying with us, and they're working through the problems with us. So again, I want to commend, commend our kids. We've got great kids, and they're, they're doing what they have to do to help us every day. So, last month, we, we brought Angie Chapman here, and Angie did a good job of talking about the secondary processes and the secondary remote experience. Also at lunch, I wanted to just say, these, we don't even ask them to do some things, and they do it out of natural, and I'm not saying this is ever going to be natural to wear this mask. I'm not, it's not. I'm, I'm struggling with it, well, just like everybody else. But our kids, they, they figure it out. It's, it's like, they're not getting used to it, but they are figuring out how to, how to manage. And that's what I do every day. I figure out how to manage it, because I know I've got to wear it every day because it's part of my job. And so, they're doing a, a great job. And at lunch, they can't, they can go without their mask when they eat, of course, and they do that when they get up and go to the lines, they know they have to put it back on. There's not a struggle with administrators to go, that we're constantly having to ask kids to do things. They're actually complying and, and doing it without being asked, because they, I, I really believe they're doing that because they want to keep their schools open, and they want to be coming here every day, which is refreshing, because remember the days when we talked about having to make kids come to school? So, there are some things that, that have improved, and you don't know what you're, what, you know, what you missed until it's gone. And so, I think some of that's true. But Angie came and talked about the secondary remote experience. This, today, we got Keenan Elementary Principal Mallory Kirby coming to us with some teachers, and she's going to talk a little bit about the remote experience for elementary. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And I think they're going to help you get to your slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We're going to, first of all, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here this evening. We're going to talk about our road to remote learning and what that looks like at Keenan Elementary. Before I get started, I'm going to introduce the three ladies that I brought with me, because they're the ones that really make me look good, and they're the ones who do, are in the classroom, zooming and going above and beyond. And so, first, I'm going to introduce Amy Store. She is going to be our instructional coach at Keenan, but she's going to talk a little bit about the home and school connection and what she did to help our teachers support our parents at home, and bless her heart, I think she was available 24/7, especially in the spring, that our teachers had to call on her to help them, and parents were even calling her to walk them through on how to get on CSOL or just to get started with remote learning. And then I also have two of my first grade teachers here tonight. I have Caitlin Watkins and Beth Smith, and so they're going to show you what it's like a day in the life of remote learning and what they're doing in the classroom. And this started, we're going to start with spring remote learning, and then we'll talk a little bit about CSOL and how we've had CSOL at Keenan Elementary since we opened, and how that was kind of an easy step for us when we jumped into remote learning in the spring, the school-to-home connection, our fall remote learning, what it looks like right now and what we're doing in the classroom, and then a day in the life of remote learning. Is this going to work? Girl, that's even better. That's awesome. Okay. So we started with spring remote learning. I don't know if they knew when they left for spring break a few days early that we weren't coming back for a while, and that they were going to begin teaching remotely, because you know how teachers are, we're working all summer. They're working all summer to prepare a classroom, to make it the best thing it can be when those kiddos walk in the building. And so, bless their hearts, they had spring break and a few days to get started and get a remote classroom up and running. But teachers, they're going to do what they have to do to make it the best, and so they give it 110%, and that's what teachers did for sure at Keenan. They jumped in, put their heads together, Amy Store worked with all of them, and we got remote learning up and going. And I think a benefit for Keenan, when we opened and we started our remote learning, is we had adopted CSOL. Amy, I'm going to give you the thumbs up now for CSOL before I go to CSOL. This is a little bit of the remote learning documentation in the spring that we used. You can see some of the hard work that the teachers kind of documented, their lessons as they pushed those out by teaks, and it kind of documented as the students were turning it in, as they were tracking those kiddos through spring remote learning, and then they just kind of had their documentation by times and dates of what they did, the meetings they had with parents or Zoom calls, and so this is kind of a little bit of the documentation that they kept during the spring when we kicked off remote learning. This is kind of just an example of a fourth grade ELA, the chart or the board that we sent out for the parents, and this is kind of what they followed during the spring for remote learning. So, CSOL, what I was going to talk about is, we adopted CSOL when we opened Keenan. So when we opened Keenan, again, luckily I had Amy Store by my side and had went to a technology conference, and so I went to Amy and asked her about CSOL, what has she heard about it? And so, of course, she jumps in, she finds out everything that we need to know, and so we purchased CSOL at that time to use it as a portfolio for our campus. And so, I mean, it was a communication tool for our teachers to use between parents and home. They would video their kiddos, maybe reading a lesson or teaching themselves how to do a math problem, and so it was just a way for us to use to show off the things that were happening at the campus. And so that's how we used it at that time when we purchased it. And then whenever we started spring remote learning, obviously it became our classroom platform, and so we used it 100% to push out all of our lessons to our parents through CSOL. Okay, and here is just an example of Ms. Smith with one of her lessons, and so this is just what a lesson on CSOL looks like, that she pushed out, Storytime with Ms. Smith. And so if you walk in a first grade classroom, if they're reading a story or doing a Zoom, they're dancing, and they're having a great time with their kiddos. So this is just an example of a lesson that we sent out for that. And then here is just one that Mrs. Watkins had pushed out for just classifying matter. So the kids were able to, they can play the instructions, it goes through the science lesson on classifying matter. And so that is what some of the lessons looked out, looked like that we pushed out. Now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Amy Store, and she's going to talk a little bit about our school-to-home connection.
Hello. My name is Amy Store. I am the instructional coach at Keenan, and I'm also the lead tech integration mentor for the district. Super excited about sharing the school-to-home connection. We knew that regardless, near or far, we wanted to make sure that our connection from school to home and vice versa was strong. And when spring remote learning happened, that was very evident, that that connection was crucial. And so we wanted to carry that over into the fall, and so I'm going to share a couple of ways that we did that on our campus. Over the summer, Mallory Kirby loves my crazy ideas, and every time I text her or call her, she's like, yes, let's do it. And so, I was on Twitter one day, and I found an educator, first of all, Twitter's the best place to go for professional learning for teachers, full of great, some great ideas. I found a teacher on there who was sending a postcard to her students over the summer with a QR code that the parents and families could scan, and they could hear her, an audio of her voice. And I thought, well, that's a really great idea, because meet the teacher is not going to be typical this year. So I reached out to Mallory. She designed a postcard, got a really cute logo on the back of it, and then we worked with teachers to use a technology tool called Flipgrid. It's owned by Microsoft, absolutely free tool. Many of our teachers across the district used it in spring and fall remote learning. And so our teachers recorded videos of themselves saying, hi, my name is Amy Store, I am your third grade teacher for the year, and we sent those postcards to families over the summer, so the kids got a postcard in the mail, and when the families scanned the QR code, they could meet their teacher. So it wasn't a typical meet the teacher where kids would come to school, and you would see them face to face and collect supplies. It was virtual, but it was something our, our parents loved and our students loved. We even got a lot of traction on Twitter. Microsoft even reached out to Mallory and I, their PR department, to talk about it, so who knows what's going to happen with that. But that is one thing we did to bridge that home-to-school connection and vice versa. And then, we also did some tech support for our parents. You know, when our teachers started remote learning, that's an extra layer of support on top of providing instruction to your students, was also talking to parents and families about, I can't sign into CSOL, my password's not working. And so myself and our wonderful librarian Nikki Taylor sent out this graphic, and we were like, we don't know what's going to happen, our parent's going to overwhelm us. It was actually okay. Like Mallory said, I was on the phone with many parents in my truck on the way to school, emailing, texting. We invited parents to come to school safely, so I could help them troubleshoot, because it's, it's not easy to troubleshoot technology via cellphone when you can't see what's going on. And so this was a big support for our parents. We did this in the spring, and we are continuing to offer that now for our remote families. So then that kind of takes us into fall remote learning, and we used current Montgomery-aligned curriculum documents. This is what we call MAC, Montgomery-Aligned Curriculum, and we knew that we, fall remote learning was going to look very different from spring. I called it crisis learning. That was not remote learning in the spring. We really didn't have time to plan, and we did our best. I'm so proud of my teachers and the work that they put in, but we had time for fall remote learning to really dig in and utilize our district resources. And so, the coaching team, the district's leadership developed a document that we called the Virtual MAC Companion. So it was based on MAC, that's just a snapshot of MAC. The next picture shows our year at a glance. We've been using these for a few years now. And so then we took those and we developed a document, the, the Virtual MAC Companion that was just a little bit more condensed, smaller, less paper. So that's the next picture. Actually, no, it's not. That's the picture that shows our district framework for remote learning. So we used that to develop the next picture, which is just a companion to MAC, to help teams plan. It has all the resources, suggested days, pacing, things like that. So that was another layer that we did as a coaching team to support teachers, which leads into a day in the life with these two lovely ladies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Store.
Was that a bit emoji on there that I saw?
Just got to get clarification. I know. Full of my face. Thank you so much for letting us present tonight. So, a day in the life with Ms. Watkins and myself. Ms. Watkins teaches math, science, and social studies, and I teach language arts, writing, reading. And so, we, at the beginning part of remote learning in the fall, were...
Working together. We were in the same room. Her room was already set up, since I am new to the district as of middle of the year last year. And so we, we adopted her classroom to do our remote lives, and we kind of sat down and we were like, how can we make this engaging for our kids at home? They're six and seven years old, and I personally have a first grader, and so I'm like, okay, thinking of my son, who is very hyperactive, what can we do? And so we started thinking about putting together our morning meetings. And so what we did is we're like, okay, we're going to acknowledge each and every student every single day, every single morning. We're going to call their name, we're going to have them wave at us, you know, tell us a little something about themselves, and then we're going to get up and move, because that's crucial in a first grade classroom. If they're not moving, they're not engaged. They're absolutely checked out on it. So, there is a program called Go Noodle, and it's also free, and it has, very kid-friendly, it's engaging, it gets little dances, and so every single morning, we start a roll call, and then we do Go Noodle. And as Ms. Kirby stated earlier, she said, you know, they're always dancing. We would have people walk by our classrooms and look at us like we're crazy, because some days we have TRs on our head, and some days we have Superman capes on, and we're dancing crazy. But it's important to our kids, and they loved it, because they got up at home. You see them in the screen, you know, jumping around their rooms or wherever they're at, doing their remote learning.
And we would show you all of those Zooms, but we have all of our students as well.
Yes.
So in them, so we don't just show ourselves, just share your screen, so you'll see just snippets of us. But they're really great videos, I'm sorry.
If you need a laugh, just, just take a peek at a first grade Zoom. It's, it's pretty funny.
So we start, we do our calendar time?
Yes, and so then we do the calendar time, and that's where, so in my classroom, I start my morning, every morning with, you know, good mornings, and then we do calendar time, where we talk about what day it is. It's very crucial for them to do, you know, day of the week song and month song, our month song, and we make sure we write our short date and all of that. So we made sure that we figured out how to incorporate that for Zoom. So there were days where I was holding the camera, and we're bending down on the floor, and Ms. Smith is down crouched on the floor, writing on our calendar, and just so that when the kids did transition back into the classroom, that it was as normal as possible, because that was our goal, was we don't want them to see everything virtually and then come into the classroom and be like, what is happening? Like, this is not what we have been used to for the last four weeks. So that was our goal there, and then we moved into language arts.
And so we'd talk about our lessons that we'd assigned on CSOL and our skills for the day, and, and just if they had any questions or comments about those, and, and we'd comment on the fact that the day before's lessons of what great writing we're seeing and what great story reading we're hearing from them, and so it was very special that they were getting affirmation from us about the work they were doing. So it kept them engaged and wanting to continue to, to do their work.
Yes. And we also did, so we had what we called breaking alerts, and the first grade team kind of sat down as a whole and said, okay, what's something special we can do to get them used to the school, the, the rest of the school and the rest of the staff? And so, our team leader reached out to, you know, Mrs. Kirby and Ms. Freeman and Amy Store and our librarian and every, you know, even some of our cafeteria workers, to have, that they would see on a daily basis, to come into our classrooms safely and introduce themselves and bring a little snippet of, you know, who are we, how are we working? And so the picture up there, it says special guest, that's our librarian, Nikki Taylor. And so when they would come in, we would spin the card around and say, breaking alert, breaking alert, and so the kids would get so excited to see them and...
And unmute and say hello.
Yes, they would get to unmute themselves, it's like, hi, we miss you. It, it was great to see those kids, you know, and then the kids who were new to the district, they were already recognizing people that they would see on campus when they did finally come into our campus. And we always ended our day with line announcements, because it's great for them to see Mrs. Kirby and Ms. Freeman and Ms. Wonderlick. They love our announcements in the mornings and our pledges and our magic, you know, what we believe in. And then we ended with virtual hugs, because what first grade teacher does not like to hug kids? I mean, we miss, we miss being able to hug our kids freely, so we always end with virtual hugs, and I know that I end, I continue to end my virtual meetings every day, even in the afternoons. And today, I almost forgot, and I was like, okay, guys, I was like, I gotta run, and they're like, wait, you didn't hug us! So it's, it's great to see that they're adapting that, and they're ready to come back, so.
Very ready.
This is my, so these are my live Zooms as of right now. So as of September 8th, I have switched over to just doing MAC, Science, and Social Studies in the afternoons. My live Zoom typically lasts from anywhere from an hour to maybe an hour and 15 minutes, and I know you're thinking, wow, that's a lot for a six-year-old. It is, it's a lot for a six-year-old, but it's very, very functional. We have what we call Mrs. Watkins Says, and so they'll stop every 15 minutes of whatever we're doing, maybe mid assignment, and we stand up, and it's just like Simon says. And they look forward to it. Again, if I forget, one of them will unmute and say, can we do Mrs. Watkins Says? I'm like, absolutely, let's do it. You need a brain break? I need a brain break? Let's go. And it's about, you know, 30 seconds, 45 seconds long, and then I've got them back, wrapped back in, they're back engaged, and we can finish out, finish out our lesson. I do five-a-day math, just like I would every single day. I've printed it out, and we've created packets to send home on Friday afternoons for parents to pick up. If parents can't pick them up, we've offered to deliver them or email what needs to be printed out for their kiddos at home. So we're working, bringing that school-to-home connection. This is a couple pictures that you'll see on there are of my kids' work, so that is a science experiment. I try to do at least one, maybe two, science experiments with them a week. We are working with the melting and cooling process, so we, I melted crayons on live Zoom with them and had them record in their STEM scope journals that we provided for them. And I also turned it into a CSOL activity for those parents who are unable. I had a parent who had a, they were out of town for a death in the family, and they were like, we can't get there. I said, it's okay, I've created a CSOL activity, I've read it to you, all they have to do is draw in it, or you may print it off and take a picture. And so that's a couple examples of mine, and then some math manipulatives that we got And so that's a couple of examples of mine. And then some math manipulatives that we got together at the very beginning of the year and sent home.
We, we created at the beginning of virtual learning, a large packet of a folder and, and manipulatives and dry erase for, or markers and things that they could use at home to complete our lessons and kind of help their transition back into the class be easier and a little, a few fun activities as well with magic Play-Doh. So.
Will you click on the science lesson of the day, please? If it'll let you. So I created a science lesson with them and like they said, it's my Seesaw. If you click, I don't know if it'll let you do it because it's in Seesaw. When they clicked on the Skittle activity, I did this at school with them on live and I recorded it for the, for the kids who weren't able to be on it. And I poured hot water to see, to show them what heat does to objects and it created a rainbow and then they had to go and create it. But it's just something that we were going to show, but I don't think it'll be able, you'll be able to see yet.
If you scroll down a little bit, the videos down.
Is it? Okay. See? Thank you, Amy Storey. Here, she strokes. Watch the science. Sorry. Uh, maybe the student. Yeah, I don't think it will. I'm sorry. Well.
You're allowed to give the board homework.
If you'd like to see it, I will send it to you.
Actually, it'd be posted in the district.
Oh, it is. It is posted in the district website on Seesaw.
So in my classroom, I'm the language arts teacher and I am virtual in the morning and in person in the afternoon, which means I have a class in the afternoon and Ms. Watkins and I flip-flop that. So in the morning, we do roll call just the same and do a little Go Noodle, get up and move. Mondays, we usually have a review of the packet that came home on Friday and, and make sure that everybody has their packet and deliver those if they don't. And then we, we do a review daily of all of our Seesaw assignments. And so there's usually a language arts, a writing journal, inspiration, and then a read to your teacher and then sometimes a sorting activity for like short A sounds. We also, in my room, move on into our lessons of writing and, and I do about an hour, hour and a half minute video or zoom with all the students as far as the lessons that they need to do with me. And that's recorded and then also pushed out to students who are not able to attend that zoom at that time. So some people have doctor's appointments, that kind of thing. So it keeps them right on course with where they need to be. So at the end of my zoom in the morning time, since the morning announcements are happening in the morning, we end with the pledge to the flags and sing if there are any birthdays and any well wishes for the day so that they get to see our administrators and it makes them happy to be able to do that. We do virtual hugs and then we have questions and comments. And sometimes they just want to tell me that their cat snuck out of the house. Or sometimes they want to say, hey, did you see my story about, you know, Godzilla? So they like to share what's going on in their homes, but yet they also have some questions of what lessons we're doing, that kind of thing, just to clear it up.
Sometimes you'll have a parent who'll peek their head in and say, hey, can I stay on afterwards and ask a question? And we're like, absolutely. So we'll end our recording and, you know, dismiss everybody else and push those kiddos into the waiting room that can't quite figure out how to end the zoom. And then that parent's free to stay on and ask us questions and kind of help, help them figure out whatever it is that they're needing help with.
And we'll see us doing some smaller zoom sessions as well as far as like reading groups and, and math groups. Absolutely.
That's it. No, that's it.
We're, we're much better together. We like it.
We like our separate ones a bit. I love, I love whenever I can look at my foot site. Did I forget anything?
I'm not so sure. Let's look.
These, both of these ladies were given a class roster. We started the year and then I came to them and said, what are we, you're going to be a remote teacher? So you're going to have a remote classroom and then our traditional classroom. They have, obviously you can see the excitement that they share doing this. And so they've been a great team to do remote learning at school. And they've done a great job of keeping what a classroom looks like at school the same as remote learning. So they've gone above and beyond and done a great job. So yes.
Yeah, phenomenal.
Thank you so much.
I do want to thank Kenan Elementary School. They were really our opportunity to think through different platforms. As the board knows, we were getting a lot of parent concerns from spring around different platforms. Our principals came together with teacher input and made a decision to use Seesaw at the elementary, Google Classroom at the secondary. And because of their experience and having a rock star like these teachers and Amy, we were, and we were able to really utilize their expertise across our district. And I just want to thank them because their experience really helped our district have a very successful coming back with remote learning. The board knows this, but because we want to make sure that we're sharing with our community, we're constantly learning how to try to do this better. I would say at the elementary level, they probably struggled a little more with remote coming back than some of our secondaries did initially. But that's kind of flip flopped a little bit as we've come back in a hybrid model. Our elementary principals have gotten together and with Wendy Graves and they really have come up with a very innovative way to deliver instruction to make sure we are excellent in the classroom and with remote. And so we have our, majority of our teachers are teaching in person their classes. But then for those parents who chose remote, we were able to get a dedicated teacher at every grade level to be able to teach the remote classes. And so they're having a really great experience, maybe with a teacher different than the school of which they're assigned. But it's still a great fourth grade lesson or a great fifth grade lesson or kindergarten lesson. More challenging at the secondary level where you can't do that. Myself and Mr. McFadden were at Montgomery Junior High today and I need to clarify the record. I, I took umbrage with calling Ms. Bevins an old dog. She didn't with Ms. McFadden. She just reminded him that she does bite. But we were having this conversation around that you simply can't replicate. There aren't enough students choosing remote to be able to designate grade level teachers, subject level teachers, even in a subject area. You have AP teachers, pre-AP, on grade level. So we're just figuring it out and we will continue to get better and better. But again, we ask for grace and patience as we're trying to make it better each and every day for our students. One of the things that's made it great is the leadership of Dr. Busby and we're going to ask her to come forward and give you some technology updates.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to jump on the Amy Storey bandwagon too because when we brought Seesaw in, that was something I was familiar with slightly. And so I was even one of those calling her and saying, hey, Amy, how did you do this on there? So she's been a great support to our, not only Kenan, but to our district. So I appreciate that. And it was really great to hear the awesome things that the teachers are doing there. So that was fun. One of the things that we want to talk about is the COVID tracker that was on the website that you referenced. We have added this to the website and we did get some requests to be able to see the status of cases in our district. Connor ISD was a site that we looked at of how they shared their information. And we also saw some other district models of how they were presenting their information. And then the COVID rapid response team met and kind of looked at how is it that we are wanting to share the information for Montgomery ISD? And when we thought about the feedback that we were getting from our community, the answer was kind of the question that she had mentioned. How can I decide if I feel safe sending my child back? And so if we were to put cumulative numbers up there, it could look like there's a lot going on and you might not know what the current status of that campus is. So the decision was made to report current cases, current situations. So when you go to the site and, and this is kind of a screenshot of what the site looks like at the top, there's a graph and you can look at the graph by each campus and you'll be able to see during that date, that's a snapshot of that date of what, how many students or as it says on here, how many students are out? Because maybe they either were exposed to someone positive or they're exhibiting symptoms of COVID. And so they are then self-quarantining because of that. The current number of positive students and then the same information for our staff. In the green, you'll see the, the actual enrollment that we have of the students and staff, just so you can kind of see a comparison to what is our numbers as a whole? And then how many do we have current cases? Because as current cases, you will see these numbers change. So we do have a point contact in the district that monitors. We have a spreadsheet from each campus where they report information because we have to report to TEA. We have to report to local health departments. So we have the numbers. So each day she goes in there and she adjusts the spreadsheet, which then feeds into the website to adjust the website. So then you can kind of see, okay, maybe right now this is going on at this campus. But then on another day, you'll see much lower numbers because those students who may have had to quarantine have now been able to return to campus. So if you are looking for this chart, this little icon, the COVID-19 tracker, if you go to the Montgomery Moving Forward and click on that icon, it will bring you to this graph. You'll see on here it says goal is to update it every weekday. Like I said, we do have a point contact that, that she's working on that, but she also has another job. So she's doing her very best to keep up on that. And then it may be slightly delayed because of the information getting on the spreadsheet. So maybe the information has to get to the principal and it has to get to the nurse and the nurse has to do some investigation and then they have to put it on the spreadsheet and then it gives into our data. So there could be up to a 24 hour delay on, on the way that the information is presented on the website. So that's our goal there. But we did get some feedback on the tracker after we first put it out there that they weren't understanding why the numbers were changing. So we did go back and add a little bit of verbiage at the beginning that explains this is to reflect current cases. So hopefully that makes it a little more clear of why the numbers are changing and what that looks like. And hopefully then that's a tool that our parents find helpful. Okay. So we're going to talk about another hot topic today, the mask. And so we talked about, we do get our guidelines from TEA and then the masks have been a hot topic. It's been one of those things that we've had to discuss. Our COVID rapid response team has talked about it over and over again, you know, what is required? What kind of masks are required? Is it okay? Who has to quarantine? Who doesn't have to quarantine? And man, they're not easy answers. But we finally, one day where we're just sitting down and actually we had a principal that drew some pictures. I think she sent some emojis. And it was basically this graphic. This is how by TEA guidelines, we are keeping our schools open. It's because this map, this graph will show you, the first column is a COVID-19 positive individual. Let's say they are there. And whether or not they're wearing a mask, you'll see. And then the second column is a person that's in close contact with them. Now, of course, a COVID positive person is going to have to quarantine. They're going home. But the other person, the decision on whether or not they have to go home is contingent on the mask wearing. If the COVID positive person is wearing a mask and they were wearing a mask, they do not have to self-quarantine based on those guidelines. And so that's why we try to encourage the mask wearing so we can keep school going, so that we can be in person with these wonderful teachers doing these lessons and continue to keep schools open. You can see in every other scenario, if only one person is wearing the mask, that doesn't meet the guidelines. So they do have to do then the self-quarantining. So that is why we're in the position that we're having to, and needing to encourage the mask wearing.
Amy, if we can just stay on this for a second. I'm, I really am proud of our district and when we compare our statistics, at least from the ones we're able to, to do so. I think we do have the highest percentage of students returning to school for in-person around the Montgomery School districts. And it's hard to say because of the way the cases track and how we're all displaying the data. But I think we've probably had some of the lowest rates of having to have students and staff quarantined at home. I'm knock on wood because we want to keep that going. We, we don't want to have to be shutting down entire classes or grades or schools or our district. And so the thing about this graphic, and we constantly come to this, and, and Mr. McFadden said this, our students have been outstanding. Our employees have been outstanding. Our parents have been outstanding about our requirement for the masks. And, you know, it's easy to say the governor made it, TEA requires it, but really for us, it's about keeping our schools open. And, and the situation is this, at this amazing Kenan Elementary School, under the first scenario of a student walks in to a class and we find out the next day that they tested positive for COVID. If it's a fifth grade class, Ms. Kirby's wonderful school, everyone else is going to be wearing a mask. If the teacher's wearing a mask or a shield, the only student going home is that student. In the same outstanding school in first grade, if a student comes in and we find out the next day they tested positive, that student's going home. More than likely, every other student in that class is going home. And even though the teacher's wearing a mask or a shield, the teacher is probably going home. And then if that student was exposed to anyone else during kindergarten, during playground or lunch, they may be having to go home too. Because we've had to become very skilled at something called contact tracing, which I promise they don't teach you in teacher, principal or superintendent school. We're not complaining. It's the rules. We're required to follow them, but our following them as well as we followed them, the caring attitude of our teachers to encourage it. There have been some situations where we've had people so focused on it that they may be not relating it to our students in the way we want it. But we're working, we are working on things like mask breaks and required times during a school day where we will have all students have the opportunity to have a break. But again, that diligence has allowed us to reopen school and have at this point, few numbers of students or grades or classes having to be sent home.
All right. Let's get an update on our operation connectivity. So when we first brought this to you, we had an initial bulk order where we ordered a thousand laptops and 400 hotspots. TEA opened that opportunity for us to be able to participate in additional devices at a discount. So we ordered an additional 1,389 laptops. That operation connectivity process, the deal was the district paid for half and TEA agreed to pay for the other half. So the last time we came, that total would be the expected cost of $482,570. There were, was another piece we mentioned at the last board meeting where we may have the opportunity to tap into some coronavirus relief funds. This is through the city or the county and through the work of Dr. Morrison and Chris Lynn, they have worked with the judge and they have agreed to, yeah, that we can dip into some of those funds. And so they have committed to 25% of that total cost. So basically they're splitting the rest of that that was left. Okay. But there's more. So because of that, that qualifies us to be able to apply to TEA for additional funds. Because we were able to obtain those funds through the, through the county, then we couldn't apply for this to cover the other 25%. So if you're doing that math, these are those happy numbers I told you I was going to talk about. This is our total final cost to the district. We are very excited about that. So we're going to continue the celebration on the finance side tonight, Mr. Lynn, because that's a very happy number. And so we appreciate the work that the two of you did to be able to get the county to do that CRF funds so that we could then apply for TA for the rest of it.
So is it 2389 is the total laptops?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's great.
That's amazing.
All right. And that is it on my part.
So we now have Mr. Morris coming back with Clint Hurd. Some of you were, had the opportunity to attend our meet the lions and meet the bears on a Friday and Saturday of last week. And it really ushers in the opportunity to reintroduce sports to our community. So we're going to have Bobby and Clint give an update.
We're going to continue to celebrate with activities that have started to happen on our campuses. And I want to thank Coach Hurd and Lori Poland and the campus administration and, and the coordinators on our campuses as they have worked diligently, had lots of conversations, read lots of material from, from the UIL to implement the, the proper protocols that we need to implement to, to have our activities and have them in a safe way. And Coach Hurd is going to give you a brief update on, on the extracurricular activities, athletics and other UIL activities.
This must be a very special day if we got Chris Lee and Clint Hurd in a tie. And a suit.
Good evening. It has been a very eventful time in all of our lives and school, as is well in athletics. There are a number of COVID-19 adjustments that we are having to make to our athletic venues. Our capacities will definitely be lowered due to UIL, social distancing and capacity mandates that we were given. As we got those and we looked at the different ways that we could do it, we had to make some priorities and the priorities were, as far as capacity is make sure that our parents get an opportunity to see their children. to see their children perform. If you go into a football game, that's band, cheer, drill, JROTC, choir, and of course, football. Parents, so these folks were given priority first to get into the stadium, and how can we accommodate them. Of course, you know, we're going to follow all UIL mandates, as well as GA 29 in all of our athletic venues and athletic events that we host. We have hosts, probably the most difficult thing to do, and that's a cross-country meet. If you've ever been one, it's pretty hard to social distance, but the people were great. All the schools attending were great, so we feel very good about that. One of the things that I certainly have the pleasure to do is I will help the fine arts departments in our school with their UIL mandates. I've been working with the directors, sponsors, and coaches, along with campus administration, and it's been very enlightening getting to work with those folks and helping them with any type of UIL situations that they have. Safety is our top priority, of course, for our students, our coaches, sponsors, directors, and of course, all the spectators that come in to our venues. I think we're doing a very good job of continuing to reinforce safe practices and procedures, whether it be in the locker room or out on the field. And finally, you know, things are going to be a little different. You know, the way that you come to a game is going to be different, the way that you get into a venue is going to be different, and the size of the crowd is going to be different. But the main thing is, as we like to say, is I want to do, we, we want to do everything that we can to make sure that these kids have every opportunity to perform at all the events that they're able to perform at. And we're going to be very diligent in the way that we go about that. So do y'all have any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Hurd.
That does conclude our update. I want to again thank our outstanding principal and teachers at Kenan Elementary School, and really thank all of our employees. It has been a very different opening of schools. Again, it's been four distinct different reopening of schools, but we're figuring it out. And we're learning organizations that we learn every day, and our commitment is to deliver in-person instruction and remote instruction at the very highest level. And anyone who has any inputs or ideas to help us along that pathway, we will meet, and we will listen, and we will work together collaboratively.
Thank you so much. Good job, guys, really. So that pretty much concludes the open session of our board meeting.
Here's one other item.
Oh, okay, sorry, you're right. We do have the monthly financial report and budget transparency and process forward. Sorry, Chris, I thought the Chris Show was over.
I would be okay if it was over, but you know, like I think we said last month, you got to give the people what they want. So a little more Chris Lynn is what we're getting tonight. So we celebrated some financial milestones tonight, but it doesn't stop there. And so what we wanted to talk about is transparency moving forward. As we start the process of developing a next year's budget, we wanted, Dr. Morrison and I both have the same beliefs that we want a transparent collaborative process. Adopting a budget should not be an event, it should be a process, and it should be a year-long process. And so we have committed to a couple of things. One, we're gonna, we've committed to providing the board with quarterly updates. The board will have quarterly workshops, and at those workshops, we will provide you with updates on the standing of our current budget. We'll let you know what challenges and opportunities that we're facing with the budget, and we will identify some key performance indicators and review that information with you as well. We're also making a commitment to bring the public into the budget process. And so after we've shared information with the Board of Trustees, we will be holding town hall meetings for the public and asking for input, concerns, particular areas of pain for the community with regards to the budget. And ultimately, you know, obviously, we will not forget our principals, directors, and other key administrators as we go through that process. And so I just really wanted to make sure that this board and the community understand that we want to be transparent, we will be transparent moving forward, and it will be a collaborative process. On the topic of transparency, while I have the mic, I just want to touch on one subject real quick. I know that there was an article in the Community Impact Newspaper last month regarding CTE funds, and I believe the title of the article was "The Million Dollar Mistake." I don't know that I'll ever forget that. And so I wanted to address that while we're talking about transparency this evening, and I want the community to understand, and hopefully we can put this past us and move on from here, that even though the article was written, there was nothing illegal that was done by any previous or sitting board member or administrator. There was no misappropriation of money, meaning there was no money missing. The issue came about because of a district practice that had been in place for many years, and it's not a practice that we will continue to use moving forward. The problem with the practice was that it may not have been as transparent as we would like it to be moving forward, and so we're no longer going to use that practice. But I just wanted to take a minute and reassure the community, nothing illegal, the district has been found to be compliant with state spending requirements, no money was missing, and we will have a transparent collaborative process moving forward. So I just wanted to address those few things while I had a few minutes.
And just to add, the reason we thought this was important to bring forward, there are many, many requirements and many, many obligations that we have to this community in terms of educating children. But I always say there's three core ones that I think the community expects us as a board, and the team of eight, and my team, to constantly be messaging and communicating. The first is how are we doing in terms of educating all children well? Two, how are we keeping our students and staff safe? And three, how are we being good fiduciary officers of the taxpayer dollars? And coming in shortly after Mr. Lynn and hearing about the CTE issue, again, not a violation of state regulations, nothing that was cited in an audit, but there's a spirit of how to communicate how we spend the valuable dollars that we have the privilege to earmark for education, and how we go about making those priorities work in terms of moving our school district forward. And so our commitment is to come forward to this board at least four times a year to update how are we progressing, where are we seeing our budget expectations being met, where are we perhaps seeing some additional revenue that we might want to put into different areas, where are we seeing challenges coming from federal, state, or local revenue that we need to adjust to? It's not unlike the school budget, like your household budget. You're constantly saying, "Well, this is what we set aside for mortgage, rent, food bills, this is what we set aside for vacation, college tuition," and sometimes you're mixing and matching. But if you're not clear about that mixing and matching, then all of a sudden you find yourself short in an area. And just like in the home, there's things you have to do, the things you'd like to do, and the things you'd love to do. In a school district, there are things we'd love to do, there are things we'd like to do, but there are things we have to do. And our ability to come forward to this board more regularly, to report out those key performance indicators, then to go out to our community, to share that information with our community, to get insight, input to their priorities, so that by the time we present a budget, it says the superintendent's proposed budget, but it becomes your budget the minute you vote on it. And we want that, again, not to be an event, but to be a process that's collaborative, transparent, and done with the community.
Chris, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
So two questions. Number one, in hindsight, what could either have this board or any future board moving forward, what could they, should have they, what questions should have been asked to have this figured out at that time? And then number two, how did you figure it out? How did this get uncovered?
Okay, sure. So as far as board responsibilities, you obviously have a lot of areas that you have to oversee for the school district. Administratively, I know that our team believes it's incumbent upon administration to share information with the board, because you can't possibly know every little detail that goes on throughout the school district for the entire year. Okay? So it starts with us, and this is why we are committing to communicating with this board and this community to make sure that these types of things don't go uncommunicated. Okay? And so I think that probably falls on administration more than responsibility of the board. It came about because of a question from a board member, and it was a simple question. It makes, you know, when we were having those preliminary budget workshops, the question was asked, if we did not give, if we're not planning on giving a pay raise for 2021, how can our expenditures be increasing? Because you would think that they would be flat. And so he asked the question that night, and I really went back and started looking. And we are notified by the state of Texas what we call a summary of finance, and it lays out the amount of revenue that we're going to earn from the state of Texas based on our student enrollment in different programs. And so from that number, it says you're going to earn X number of dollars for CTE. And then in parentheses right behind that, it says, "Required to spend 55%." And so in my mind, that's a real simple calculation. Here's our revenue, I'm going to take 55% of that. When I went and looked in the budget for CTE expenditures, there were over a million dollars less budgeted than what we were required to actually spend. Okay? So that's how it came about, that's how it was uncovered. But it was ultimately brought forward because of board member oversight. Should it have gotten to that point? No. And we're making the commitment that it won't get to that point moving forward. We will have open, honest, transparent communications with this board and with this community. That's our responsibility, and that's what we commit to do.
When do you think we'll have our first quarterly update, Mr. Lynn Ballpart?
I believe y'all are scheduled to have your first quarterly workshop. Is it?
September 22nd.
September 22nd.
But our first one where we will actually start talking about budget updates, because part of what we're doing on the 22nd is to revisit all of the goals the board has set forth, and start to suggest targets and key performance indicators. So that quarter two, I think, will happen sometime in November.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? All right.
Well, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I think I can say that now. At this time, the open session, we're going to go ahead and close it down and go into closed session, as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act. You can see in your agenda the things we're going to kind of talk about, and then we'll come back after that and make any motions or amendments we need to. Thank you. Okay, we're coming back from our closed session, and we just have one motion.
A motion to approve personnel as presented in closed session.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Good night.